So I will open this meeting of the Needham Planning Board. And I am Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting does, this part of this meeting is a continuation of the hearing with regard to the application of Children's Hospital. And I will see if there are any persons in attendance who wish to make any comment while that meeting, while that portion of the meeting is, is being discussed. But otherwise, I don't expect that there will be any public comment. Let me mention at this time that our agenda does show that we have a special permit hearing continued for 400 Honeywell Street. However, I expect that there will be a motion and the Planning Board will vote to further continue that hearing without having any discussion or additional presentation at this meeting. And this is because there have been revised plans submitted, but they were submitted too late to, for us to adequately have time and town staff to adequately have time to review the revised plans. So if there are any members of the public who are tuned in because they're particularly concerned about 400 Honeywell Street, I did want to let that be known. And so that's, so I, that's in connection with my comment about public comments at this meeting. But first, we're going to confirm that, and I see Mr. Alpert has joined us. So good. So first we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the Planning Board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. So I, Jean McKnight, am present. Ted Owens.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
Present.
And Paul Alpert.
Present.
All right. And also next I'll introduce our town staff and Planning Department and other town staff. So we have Planning Director Lee Newman.
Here.
Assistant Planner Alexandra Klee.
I'm here.
Clay Hutchinson from the Planning Department, who was here to assist us technically.
Here, thank you.
And also, we have, for a matter that will be later on our agenda, Town Council Christopher Heap.
Hello.
And we also have Carrie Lustig, who is the interim director of the Department of Public Works of the town. Yes, Carrie, you are here.
I'm here, yes.
So then the first item on our agenda is the Continued Public Hearing for the Amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 201207. And the Children's Hospital Corporation is the petitioner. The property is located at 66 B Street, 160 First Avenue, 410 First Avenue, and 37 A, A Street in Needham. And this is regarding the request to build out development for Children's Hospital. So I will call the names of the persons who are here attending this hearing for Children's Hospital. And I'll call them in accordance with a list that I have here. Senior Vice President for Real Estate Lisa Hogarty.
Present.
Attorney from Goldston and Stores Timothy Sullivan.
Present.
He said, Jean.
You're, you're just, it's helpful if somebody, if you respond with something oral, present or here. Senior Project Manager Gerald Topping.
Here.
And from VHB, that is Vanessa Hangen Russell, an engineering firm. Sean Manning.
Here.
And also Attorney Robert Smart.
Here.
All right, so proceed with that public hearing. And well, let me mention some communications that have come in since our last public hearing regarding this project. And the communications pertain to commitments to be made either by construction or paying of some of money to address the addition, the fact that this project will increase the sewage flow to our town system. And the mitigation has to do with addressing infiltration and inflow generally in the, in the, in the system. So I have an email December 16th from Gerald Topping to Anthony Delgazo, who is our town engineer regarding this matter and saying that that Children's proposed making the additional I and I mitigation a prerequisite to receiving the building permit to develop the third site. Planning Board stated they would defer to Engineering's recommendation and then asking for Mr. Delgazo's thoughts. Then there is a response from Mr. Delgazo, December 21st. Let's see. No, actually, I should focus on the response dated to December 22nd from Thomas Ryder, who was also staff for the town, engineering staff for the town, a basis for the increased I and I mitigation. And having no comment or objection to the I and I removal requirement proposed, just saying that the applicant should propose in a letter to the Planning Board the method they intend to use to meet that requirement. And then an email from Lee Newman asking for that response from the applicant. So then this leads to a letter dated December 29th, 2020, which is going to be referred to as an exhibit in the decision that we'll be talking about later, that saying that the Children's Hospital proposes to comply with this removal of I and I requirement by paying the amount of $132,000 prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for 381st Avenue. And they would make that payment rather than undertaking a construction project. So that was the commitment that was asked for. It was provided in the form of that letter. So I think that leads us to, and that was the, the thing that we were waiting for and that the reason we continued this hearing, I believe, is to wrap up that issue. So I'll ask, just in general, whether there are, ask the Planning Board members, whether there is any a comment or question before we get into the decision, on which I understand there may be comments or questions. So Mr. Owens, is there any comment or question?
I have none.
Mr. Block?
I have none.
Mr. Jacobs?
No, I'm satisfied.
All right, then. Mr. Alpert?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. When we get into the decision, I have a rather basic question after reviewing the documents and going back and reviewing the plans again. So I may as well throw it out now. The, with regard to the parking garages, is, is it true that's what's proposed is an addition to Parking Garage B? If somebody would, on the team, would respond to that question? Because there's references to Parking Garage A throughout the decision with regard to the facade length. So I was thinking at first, well, maybe this is some mistake. But perhaps there really are two things. What's proposed is in addition to Garage B, at the same time, it has been noticed, I'm just speculating, that there is a restriction on the facade length of Garage A and felt that that should be dealt with at this time. I wonder if one of, somebody, perhaps Mr. Sullivan would explain?
Sure. So you're right, there are two things going on. So Garage B, there is an addition to Garage B to complete the garage as it was previously approved. That, that is happening. And then the second thing is that in looking at the plans, we did realize that when Garage A goes forward, we needed to just change it a little bit to have an elevator lobby to make it all the way to the roof, which resulted in a slightly longer uninterrupted facade. And since we're here, we thought we'd try to clean that up as well. So we are asking for that release as well.
Okay, thank you. That helps me to understand the decision, the wording of the decision. So Lee, I asked Lee Newman, our Planning Director, what's our next step here? Is it, is it to give each, each of the members of the Planning Board an opportunity to comment on the, on the proposed decision?
Well, I think before, I think we should, if, we should close the hearing and then move on to the decision.
Oh, yes.
And move to close the hearing.
All right. There was a motion to close the hearing. The motion has been seconded. So I'll take a roll call vote on closing the hearing. So Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And the chair is aye. And so we have closed the hearing. But taking this vote reminded me, and I had made notes in that regard, but forgot to, to do this. It's been our custom, just, you know, for safety sake, on, on our Zoom meetings and hearings, to entertain a motion to continue this meeting to, to the next date. If technical difficulties arise that interfere with the completion of the agenda for this meeting, the next date would be January 19th at 7:15 PM. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Second, okay. So roll call on that. Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
And the chair is aye. We've also had a motion to stand, standing motion at the beginning of our meetings that if, if I have technical difficulties as chair and I have to sit off, that vice, vice chair, Mr. Alpert, Paul Alpert would function as chair as much time as I'm absent from the meeting. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion, second?
Second.
In a second. Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block? Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
And, and the chair is aye, so we have our technical issues dealt with here. So we have the hearing closed and we have before us the request for relief and the decision.
Is to vote on the request for relief before we address the particulars of the decision. Is that correctly?
That's fine.
So it's a long one I have in front of me. So I prepared to make the motion, reading from.
Okay, can I just ask for one clarification? Ted, I just want to make sure you were able to listen to the meeting from the last meeting when this was discussed so that you can participate?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, we'll get to that in the language of the decision then. Thank you.
Okay, good. So therefore, I move, this is Paul Alpert speaking. I move that we grant the requested amendment to a special permit and major project site plan review under Section 7.4 of our bylaw to, to approve the plan described in the amendment to approve the detailed plans of Building 1, together with associated landscape and other site improvements as shown on the plan, and to approve the interim condition site plan of the project as shown on the phasing plan described in Sheet 21 of Exhibit 5 to the decision. I also move that we grant the requested special permit in accordance with bylaw Section 3.2.4.2J and Article Roman numeral 2 of the Board Rules for a Pediatric Medical Facility Use in the New England Business Center District. I further move that we grant the requested special permit pursuant to Section 4.8.3 of the bylaw to waive the requirements of Section 4.8.1, parentheses, six, close parentheses of the bylaw, to permit the facade of Garage A to exceed 300 feet of uninterrupted facade length by increasing the length of the uninterrupted facade from 315 feet to 337 feet. I further move that we grant the requested amendment to replace the previously governing plan, which was Exhibit 6 of the January 6, 2015 decision, with the plan attached to our decision as Exhibit 5. I further move that we grant the requested amendment to reallocate 34,491 square feet from Building 4 to Building 1. I further move that we grant the requested amendment to Section 3.9 of the existing special permit to reflect the change in the proposed use and subsequent changes to build our plans and parking. I further move that we grant the requested amendment to Section 3.11 of the existing special permit to reflect the change in use from office to pediatric medical facility in Building 1. I further move that we grant the requested amendment to Section 3.38 of the existing special permit to reflect the change in the proposed use and current design of Building 1. I further move that we grant the requested amendment to Section 4.6 of the existing special permit to extend the date for commencement of construction of the project and subsequent construction of later phases from November 22, excuse me, from November 14, 2022 to December 31, 2029. I further move that we grant the requested amendment to the existing special permit to extend relief previously granted to allow for uninterrupted facade length in excess of 300 feet to apply to the 337 foot feet proposed for Garage A. I further move that we grant the requested clarification, noting that the existing special permit is separate and distinct from the special permit previously granted for Center 128 East. And in granting the relief requested that the board expressly finds that the amendment of existing special permit shall not be construed as an amendment or modification to the special permit granted previously for Center 128 East. And finally, I move that we grant the request that in the unlikely event that the plan is approved by the board, but the petition is purchased, the remaining development sites for the proposed development does not occur on or before March 31, 2021, that the existing special permit shall, upon the written election of the property owner, delivered to the board no later than July 1, 2021, remain in full force and effect without modification with the following exceptions. One, the termination date of the existing special permit shall become December 31, 2029, unless further extensions are granted. And two, the requested special permit to grant the uninterrupted facade length of Garage A from 315 feet to 337 feet shall continue to be in full force and effect. And with that, I need a glass of water.
Okay, so, all right. We have the motion made by Paul Alpert for those 12 different parts of the relief to be granted. And we have the second of that motion for Adam, from Adam Block. So I will call the roll. First of all, ask with regard to any of those motions for relief, approval of relief, are there any questions or comments by the board members?
No.
Nobody has any? All right, then I'll call for the vote. Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
And the chair is aye. So the relief requested is granted unanimously. And we now move on to the actual written decision that incorporates those approvals. So I know that two of our members had submitted a couple of comments on the wording of the decision that, that don't seem to go really to the substance of the decision or the, or the conditions imposed, but to the clarity of the wording or the occasional typo. So I don't know, makes sense to go over those changes. So that when we vote on the decision, they will be, they will be made in the decision. Lee, what do you think's the best way to handle this?
There are so few of them. I can just point them out really quickly to everybody, if you like.
Right now, you want to summarize it? That's great. Go ahead.
Sure. So basically, on page 2 of the decision, the paragraph at the top, there was a typo in there. Rather than mean January 4th, 2021, it has an extra digit in there that needs to be corrected. That paragraph also needs to be clarified to recognize the fact that Ted listened to the tape and he's able to participate, having, having done that. I think the next typo that was caught was basically just a column that needs to come in after the first paragraph under the findings on page 4. The next. The next one was, I think, under page, on page 1.16 in the last sentence, the word "which" needs to be inserted after "property" and before "will." I think there was just some pagination issues on paragraphs 18 and 19. An extra word in the therefore clause on page 13 and subsection 3, an extra "of" was inserted. Again, on page 15, under paragraph 3.9, then the second sentence, an extra "of" was inserted, which needs to be deleted. And I would say also then, I think there was one substantive change that happened, Jean. And that was in the design guidelines under section, sub-paragraph 3. And if you notice, there was two identical paragraphs inserted into the draft decision in the red line, paragraph 3 and paragraph 5. That was an error. Paragraph 3 really speaks to the opaqueness of the building and it should read as follows. The prior concept plan for Building 1.
What page is that? Is that? Could you give us the page number for that?
That's on page 16 and that's not going to be reflected. That was reflected in the email I sent to you with the updated red line, which we did not distribute to everybody because of the timeline.
Okay, so it's paragraph 3 and paragraph 4 that you're speaking of?
Under Section 310 on page 16.
Yes, 310, page 16, yes.
Page 16, paragraph 3. There's a duplication. Paragraph 3 in the red line that you have reads the same as paragraph 5. That was a mistake. Paragraph 3 should talk about a design concept that was, was presented when this project was originally approved, which talked about what the design goals would be for the buildings that were built subsequently. And so we're just basically retaining that condition in this decision. And essentially, that paragraph should read as follows. The prior concept building, the prior concept plan for Building 1 that was approved under the existing special permit was approximately 35% opaque, which shall serve as a general template for Buildings 2 and 4. With respect to Buildings 2 and 4, of this, of this amount, 60 to 70% may be precast concrete, natural or manufactured stone, brick or similar masonry material, and the remainder may be metal, wood, ceramic, glass fiber, reinforced concrete, fiber cement, or similar panelized material to be used as part of wall and wall systems. Synthetic stucco EIS is prohibited. So that was part of what was the original design criteria established when the project was originally approved. The idea was we had a concept of Building 1 and that was to be carried forward on Buildings 2 and 4, which have not yet been designed. And those were the principles that we agreed to. And so that language needs to be part of this amendment.
Right. And Lee, that, later in the day, or today, I guess, a red line version was sent around with that, with that change.
Yes, I think I sent it, Marty had caught that, actually. And so I corrected it and sent it to you and to Marty. And I think I might have copied Paul on it.
Oh, okay. So it might not have gone to all of the board?
And it was just too late, just to, I thought, I thought it would be just too confusing to redo the package to fix this mistake, so.
Yes, okay. And is there any change then to paragraph 4 or 5?
Not from the red line document that you have at Tim Sullivan. Those were his changes that he suggested.
Okay. Right. Do, with the changes that were just listed, especially from Paul Alpert and Marty Jacobs, who made comments, are you satisfied that your comments have been addressed?
I am, yes. This is Paul Alpert. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Lee, did you mention at 1.19, at the second sentence? I just, you know, this is purely style, I guess, but it seems to me to, to be awkward. The second sentence ends awkwardly. I don't have it in front of me. Can you just read that?
It says the wastewater system is connected to the municipal sewer system and will continue to do so.
Or how about will continue to be so connected?
Okay, that's fine.
Minor thing. And I think that was it on my comments. I'm otherwise satisfied.
All right. If I may mention an issue that I think I did raise in a prior session of the hearing, I was expressed a concern about the parking garage. Because when the parking garage that now exists on the property, which I guess is Garage B without the addition, when it was first built, the lights were very, very bright. And I remember particularly complaining about that. And, and the lighting then was changed so that the lights that shine from the garage, particularly, you know, at night, were not as bright and glaring as they had been initially. And I wanted to have something regarding the lighting on the addition that the lighting would not be any brighter or glaring. I don't know exactly what phrase to use than the lighting that currently is used on Garage B. Is there some wording or some place that that can be poured? I just don't want that to be an issue again. Do others think that is something that needs to be addressed? Mr. Alpert?
Well, if that's already in the special permit, and the special permit is in effect except as modified by this decision, I don't think we're modifying. I don't think we're modifying the lighting in Garage B at all by this decision, so if that's a requirement that's already in the special permit, then then that requirement remains.
I may go ahead, Lee.
We had basically back, I think, back in November of twenty fifteen, we had a condition and a permit which required that that they file a proposal with the board to reduce or redirect the lighting emanating from the portion of Garage B that currently existed on the property. And that was adversely affecting the neighborhood. And they came in and showed us how they were going to mitigate that.
Yes, so you're satisfied that with that being part of the underlying or existing decision, that that condition will also apply to the addition?
I'd have to go back and look at the plans.
If there's any question, just repeat the language. I I don't, I can't imagine children's would have any trouble with that.
No, no, we, I mean, we're, we intend to light it the same way it's lit now. I mean, we don't intend to change it, so that's fine.
So so children's, Mr. Sullivan, if some wording that reflects back to that prior decision is especially added to this decision, that would not be any problem for you?
Yeah, I'm happy to work with Lee after this to just, yeah, incorporate that, sure.
So I'd like if to consider that that change to at least reference that lighting condition be made to the decision as well as all the other changes that we mentioned. So.
Madam Chair, I have another substantive question. If I may, at in the limitations section, I'm looking at page eighteen of the redlined section. So this is limitation section four point one, and I'm looking at subparagraph B. The original language that was drafted was should the applicant or permutee not seek design approval for a building for a period of two years from design approval from the preceding building. The permutee shall report to the board at the end of that two-year period, updating the board on the anticipated schedule, et cetera. And the red line version, which I suppose was or is being suggested by by Mr. Sullivan on on behalf of children's is is to change applicant and permutee to petitioner, which is fine. But changing it from the petitioner shall report to the board to that the petitioner shall, in response to a written request from the board, promptly appear at a regularly scheduled meeting. So it's shifting the burden of initiating a report to the board from the hospital to the board to keep on top of the fact that we haven't gotten a a request for design approval for a second building within two years. It's putting the burden onto our staff to calendar this and know whether or not I I I think it should stay that it's the obligation of the hospital. And first of all, I the two-year period was wasn't changed. And so I'd like to make sure that it's okay with children's that that two years from one building to design to getting started on the second building design is 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 enough time and 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 within their anticipated timeframe for when they're going to be building the other two buildings. So, you know, if if two years is too short, I'd be I I'd be happy to consider lengthening that, but but I would I I would rather that the that the burden be on children's to say, okay, we're not within the timeline. We have to tell the planning board that we're not within the timeline and report to them rather than putting the burden on our staff to have to keep on top of children's to know that there's something going on here that should have been done that that we haven't heard from them. That's 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 my comment on that.
Yes, Paul, and I'd like to add, because I made a marginal note also, that the next section, section C, has been changed. And so it doesn't tie the lapsing of the permit. It no longer ties the lapsing of the permit to a failure to continue to report under the prior paragraph, which also seems like a substantive change. So so I think those, that is an important point, and I the same, I had the same thought that the developer should keep an eye on the clock and 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 come in and and ask for this or meet with regard to this issue rather than relying on our staff to calendar it.
Madam Chair, may I? May I address those points? Because those are my suggested changes.
Yes.
So I totally appreciate the the comment. The concern that we have is the time to Mr. Alpert's point. But also, you know, if time passes and someone forgets to do this, we don't want the permit to lapse. You know, I mean, so really, what we were trying to say is, you know, we're more than happy to come in and report to the board about progress. But if it is the case that, you know, the next building isn't built within a certain period of time because of outside factors or just the way the site is developing, we don't want, you know, the permit to then sort of go away because someone forgot two years later to come back. So really, an opportunity to cure or something like that would also work. This was just my suggestion of that. But that that's what we're trying to get at.
Yes, Mr. Alpert, Paul Alpert.
Yeah. I've I've got no problem with Mr. Sullivan's change to subparagraph C, which which I think addresses his concern, stating that the fact that they don't timely report to the board doesn't mean that the permit lapses. I believe that's that's what you did in 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 subsection C. But if, in fact, there should be an update because the design for the next building hasn't gotten started within whatever timeframe is chosen here, I would like that to be on the petitioner to bring that to our attention, that they're changing their time. Basically, that you're changing your timeline is really what you're reporting to us and letting us know that the you know, you're just things are being extended. You know, we're going out nine years. That's plenty of time here, so as I said, if, you know, I I was kind of surprised to see that you're planning only two years between between the the design phases. I I thought you were planning not not to build the next buildings for quite more time than that, so.
No, no, we would. I mean, so I agree with your first point. If the change to C works, then I think we can have this be something we have to do, but we would like the timeframe to be longer. We agree with that as well. Yep.
So what change would that be? So C, C would be rewarded rewarded as proposed in the red line?
Yes.
But B, should the petitioner successor or signs not seek design approval for a building for a period of two years? And the petitioner, the original wording was shall report to the board at the end of that two-year period, updating the board on the anticipated schedule for future construction. So going back to the original wording, are you saying, Mr. Sullivan, that you'd like to have that be a longer period of time, like, for example, three years?
I I think, yes, I am saying longer period of time. I think we could also do maybe two years from the CFO for the prior building versus design if that, you know, that that would, I think, make sense as well.
So where so design approval.
Does not seek approval, does not seek design approval for a building for a period of two years, you know, following the issuance of the final certificate occupancy on the prior building or something, you know, something along those lines.
Either way, it works for me.
Okay, all right.
Lee, would we say final CFO or permanent CFO?
Permanent.
Yeah, permanent.
That works.
All right. So we all set? Mr. Alpert, then, with that comment and that change. All right, is there any, does any board member have any additional comment regarding the decision? Before we would have a motion to approve the decision with the suggested changes? Mr. Owens, you're all set?
All set.
All set, Mr. Block? Yeah, and Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All set. All right, then, I think Paul, were you, did you have a motion in mind to make here?
I move that we approve the decision with the changes that we just discussed. Excuse me, we approve the decision with the red line changes proposed by by the petitioner and with the further changes as discussed at this meeting.
Second.
So we have the motion and the second to approve the decision with those changes. So all in all in favor, Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi, and welcome to Needham.
And Mr. Alpert?
I and I second this Mr. Jacobs welcoming you to Needham, and I'm very excited by this project. I I I look forward to, I look forward to your grand opening. Thank you.
Yes, I, and so the chair is eye, and we have unanimous approval. And indeed, I look forward to the grand opening as well.
Thank you very much.
I hope we can all be there without masks.
We really appreciate all the time.
Thank you, Tim and Bob.
Thanks very much. It's been a great process.
I shouldn't forget Lisa.
Yes, I just want to say to the board, thank you for all your guidance. You know, we've been working with you for the past eighteen months. It's been an absolute pleasure. You're such a professional board, supported by real professionals with Lee and Alex. I want to say a special shout out to Bob Smart, who is really, really sort of our secret weapon and his relationship with all of you. He taught us a lot, and we're very, very excited to come to Needham.
Great.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Oh. Oh, okay, yeah, we're all set then. Very good.
Great.
So now, on our agenda, let me just get rid of this, all the paper here relating to this item. We have on our agenda a continuation of the hearing for major project site plan special permit number two thousand twenty oh three for the property of four hundred Honeywell Street. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm when we're just, you know, at the introduction stage of this meeting, a revised plan has been submitted. I haven't seen it. It hasn't been distributed. It was it was submitted rather late. I don't remember exactly which what day it was submitted, but it was with the holiday. Just impossible to have this be submitted to the members of the board for review for, you know, town staff review. And and also to fairly to make sure that the abutters who attended the last session of the hearing had an opportunity to see this on the town's website, the proposed revised change plans. So I understand, Lee, if you had, you've had communication with Attorney Genta on this proposed extension. You're muted.
We're we're in agreement that we're going to continue the hearing to January the nineteenth, which is our next planning board meeting at eight fifteen.
And Lee, is there any need for any extension of action deadlines as a result of this extension?
No.
Okay. All right, then, really, all we need at this point is a motion to continue the hearing to January nineteenth at eight fifteen P M.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to continue the hearing on four hundred Honeywell Street. And so I will call the roll. Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
And the chair is eye, so that extension is unanimously approved.
So this is Alex. There's a hand up. I don't know if it's related to the hearing continuation. If you want to entertain that or just move on, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew.
Oh, there is a hand raised. Well, we're not going to take any comments because we already have voted to continue the hearing. But if the person is raising their hand because they just want to ask about clarification on when they'll get to see the plan or something like that, we could, we could address that quickly. So would the person who has raised their hand, please say what the nature of your question is?
Hi, was I, can you guys hear me?
Yes, are you Inga Fuzikov?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm a trustee of one of the abutters, and I'm not going to take your time. I understand that you have continuance, and that's fine. I would love to understand the project better. Is it possible for me before the nineteenth to speak with any members of the planning board so I can also bring some information to people from my building and discuss it with them and be more prepared for this meeting? I tried to call, no, nobody called me back, but also I called today, so in all fairness, maybe people didn't get a chance. But what who would be the best person for me to talk to from the planning board?
And the of course, it's very difficult right now with our staff not being physically present at our building all the time. But ordinarily, our our staff, our planning director, our assistant planner might, you know, might have have the time to be able to sit down with a person and and go over the plans, that sort of thing. But actually, Ms. Fuzikov, I suggest that with regard to understanding the project and the plans, the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Jenta, should you could certainly contact him and ask ask him to.
I did contact him. He represents his client. Last time I raised very valuable issues, and he dismissed, and he said, that's necessary evil. So I'm not going to waste my time with him. I'm going to go to where people care and where taxpayers feel that the city works for us. So I would like to speak with somebody who cares about the abutters and people that would be living through this project.
Okay, just just a moment now. Mr. Alpert has has commented of guidance.
The suggestion and Lee stopped me.
I was gonna, I was gonna raise my hand and say I would be glad to speak with her.
Right, so I was going to suggest, because our staff is not always in the building, so just calling and leaving a message may may not always work, that you that you send an email to Ms. Newman and to Ms. Clea and ask one of them to call you back when you are ready.
And how can I get that email address? I would be delighted to do that.
Lee and Alex, can you give her your email address now?
Sure, mine is L Newman at Needham MA dot gov.
Can you spell it? I just don't want to misspell it.
It's L N E W M A N at Needham MA dot gov.
And Inga, this is Alex Clea. You can reach me at A C L E E and then the same ending as Lee. And you can also always email planning at Needham MA dot gov.
And these email addresses are on the town's website, are they not?
I know the departmental ones, as I don't think that my individual one is, I think Alex.
Oh, okay. All right, but I believe you.
L Newman at Needham MA dot gov, A C L E E at Needham MA dot gov, and planning at Needham MA dot gov.
That's right.
Thank you so much, guys. I really appreciate it.
All right, and we look forward to hearing from you at the continued hearing.
Right, and if you and if you. Right, and if you, and if you have comments that you put in writing in an email, Ms. Newman can then forward those on to the five planning board members.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and the revised plans that I referred to will be on the town's website, and perhaps when they are, do go up, either Ms. Clea or Ms. Newman, once you are in email communication, will let you know when they're available for your review.
She's gone.
Oh, okay, all right, then, so we're all set to move on now to the de minimis change request, which will be an amendment to major project site plan review. The applicant is the town of Needham. It's the property at 1407 Central Avenue. And so, Mr. Heap, or Ms. Lustig, would you like to present the request?
I'd be happy to, thank you very much. Hello, everyone, I'm Chris Heap, here to present this request tonight on behalf of the select board. And as the chair noted, this is a request for a minor modification of the major project site plan special permit that authorized construction of the Jack Cogswell Building at 1407 Central Avenue. This is the deep, this is the Public Works Department's seasonal storage facility. It was originally permitted back in November of 2018, and this has been completed and is in active use. Now, the reason we're here tonight is because when this building was first being permitted before the planning board, we emphasized the fact that it wasn't going to be staffed by the Public Works Department on any regular basis. The purpose, the principal purpose for the building was to store seasonal equipment while it was out of use. So there wasn't going to be much in the way of need for staffing the building, except for a couple days in the spring and a couple days in the fall when seasonal equipment was being switched. So that was the subject of some discussion when we originally, before you presenting the original application. And that point was captured in several places in your written decision. In both the findings and the conditions, there, the planning board noted that this building would indeed be unstaffed. Now, recently, given the current state of emergency relating to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Public Works Department has had an increased need to space out its employees beyond just the headquarters at 470 Dedham Avenue. So there was a need to look for some additional space to have employees report to at the beginning and end of their workday, and to occasionally work from, which led to this building, which was generally not occupied. It was identified as a place where some staff could report and work from as needed. Now, that is not contemplated in your written decision. So we've come before the board with a request to temporarily modify the written decision for the duration of the state of emergency only, to allow approximately 16 employees to report to the building at the beginning and end of the day, and work from the building primarily during inclement weather, when they're not going to otherwise be outside. Now, I should say that most of the work associated with the employees that we're talking about is outdoors and off-site, so for the most part, they're not going to be working full workdays at the building, they're going to be reporting in the morning, they're going off to work in other parts of town. And there really shouldn't be much in the way of impact, given the number of employees and the fact that they're going to be working off-site. Also, I want to emphasize that the request is purely temporary. We suggested as a condition of this minor modification that it expire, you know, immediately or shortly thereafter, after the lifting of the state of emergency, at which point the permitting would fall back to the existing decision that was issued in November of 2018. So that's the request for relief and the reason behind it. And I think that's all I've got by way of presentation, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
All right, let's see if there are any questions. Just go around the screen here, Mr. Block?
Thanks, Madam Chair, I cer, I certainly support the effort. I, I'm curious, if the, if the building was originally constructed without the intent to house any HR needs, are there any modifications needed internally to be able to accommodate heating, refrigeration, that kind of thing, meeting rooms, or large spaces for people to be able to spread out?
I, I believe the building is, has enough interior space to accommodate the number of employees we're talking about. Then again, I think more often than not, this is going to involve people reporting in the morning, picking up equipment, and then going off to work elsewhere. But in the, in, it's a big building, I think it's 5,000 square feet of open space and 12,000 square feet of enclosed interior space. So there, I do believe there should be enough interior space to accommodate the people that will be working there.
So there's no, so there's no need to accommodate, there's no need to accommodate any specific use or special use?
No, I don't believe there is.
Refrigeration or other electrical needs beyond the equipment?
I don't believe so, but Charis is shaking her head no. If, if, if you wouldn't mind speaking of that, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, there, the type of work that's being done there is largely maintenance work, pieces of equipment. And so it can be done in a large, open garage space. The heat is sufficient for the staff that's there, and there'll be no need to condition the space if this goes into the summer.
That's all, thank you very much.
And if I may mention, I happened to notice in the application there was reference to there being bathroom facilities in the building that would be sufficient for the number of staff that would be coming in.
Yeah, and I, I was, I was less than, I think, fully definitive in the written letter that we submitted to the board. We said we'd comply with all sanitary requirements, and we talked to the building commissioner about that. We have since done that, and it's, it's been confirmed that the, the facilities that are there will comply with all code and be sufficient to, to service everybody who's working there. The property is on this building, and I believe the remainder of the property is also, is also on a tight tank, so it involves having a hauler come and pump the system and, and remove it. But that can all be accommodated with the existing system.
Mr. Jacobs, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Heap, what do you mean by report? You say the workers will report to the site, what does that mean?
Now, I, this may be a better question, now, I may turn this over to Charis if she wouldn't mind, but I, but I'm understanding that it involves showing up in the morning in a personal vehicle, retrieving equipment that's going to be needed for the work to be performed that day, and then, for the most part, heading off-site to go perform that work.
Charis, is that about right?
Yeah, we have separated our staff into two separate groups, and the concept is to keep them separate. So if you ever had a need to quarantine one section, you would not have to quarantine the entire staff, and we would still have sufficient number of workers in order to make sure that our infrastructure is being supported. So in the beginning of the day, when they report to the facility or show up to switch out of their personal vehicle and into a town vehicle, it's having a separate location from the main 470 Dedham app site.
So does this mean we're going to have 16 cars parked there throughout the day?
Correct.
Whereas now, how many cars are parked there throughout the day?
There are three spaces permitted at this, at, at, for this building in the November 2018 decision. There are, however, there is, however, additional space available for two-part cars. I submitted with the letter requesting the minor modification as an exhibit, a, one of the sheets of the approved site plan. It, it shows three parking spaces, but I believe it also shows, if you look at the plan, to the east of those three striped spaces, a large area that can accommodate a number of other cars as well. In addition to that area beyond those three striped spaces, as shown on the plan, there is also the idea that if there's, if, if needed, cars can also park across the street during the day at the athletic field.
Right, I saw that, so, I mean, not, you know, if these workers are like everybody else in the world, they're going to want to park as close to work as they can possibly park. I mean, that's, that's in people's nature. So, wasn't there also something in the opinion, and I'm sorry, I can't pinpoint it for you, wasn't there also something in the opinion that said all vehicles are going to be parked indoors or undercover?
I don't believe I recall anything to that extent, to that effect in the decision with respect to workers, employees' vehicles. That, that might have, there might have been something to that effect with respect to public works, equipment, or vehicles. I mean, that's the intent of the whole building is to, is to house everything inside, or at least underneath the open canopy. But I don't believe there's any condition to that effect with regard to employee vehicles who are visiting the site.
So if there are 16 people coming in, 16 cars reporting to that site, and if I'm right, that they're all going to want to park on that site, can the site accommodate 16 cars? You think so, Charis?
Yes, I believe it will accommodate 16 cars.
Marty Jacobs, I would like, just to interject, that one of the conditions of the proposed decision here is that there's a reference to the three approved parking spaces. And then it says, "To the extent there is any parking demand beyond what can be accommodated in this area, DPW staff will temporarily use the available parking spaces located across Central Avenue at the Claxton Fieldhouse."
Right.
There's nothing in this decision that allows more than three cars to be parked on the property. So if, if parking, you know, I, I agree with you completely, that if there's any place you can pull a car up, the employees are going to do it rather than going across the street. But if it becomes an issue, we pull out this decision, and it says they're supposed to park, you know, across the street.
Yeah.
I don't know what else we can say.
Yeah, Charis, I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to get in the way of what you need to do here, and I'm all for it. I, I just see a potential problem with 16 cars, and with, you know, people, people are going to do what they're going to do, and, and we know that, and I just, I'm trying to make sure you're aware that you got to let people know if, if the parking issue is abused, that we're going to ask you to come back before the board. So, I'm trying to be clear, but not difficult, if I can be. But that's my point here, that's all. That's my only question or, or issue.
Mr. Alpert, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I've, I've got two comments. One is that if, if people are parking at Claxton Field parking lot, I just want to point out, add to, for you to point out to, to the DPW employees that as you're coming from Dover, there's a, there's a speed limit sign that says speed limit 40 miles an hour, which is pretty fast. Tell them, be really careful crossing Central Avenue there. Cars, cars go really fast in that section of, of Central Avenue. And second comment is, I noticed that you have this expiring 30 days after the governor lists the state of emergency, and if that's, that can be a pretty tight timeframe, if you'd like us to change 30 days to a longer timeframe, let's do that now. Just throw that out at you, if you want to do that.
More than happy, I was maybe too conservative in the, with the request. If the board's amenable, I'm more than happy to have that extended slightly. That would be, that would be, that would be great.
Do you like 45 days, 60 days, 45 days?
60 would be, would be great.
I'd be, I've got no problem with that, if the rest of the board is willing to make that change.
Appreciate that.
All right, I think, do I see nods of approval that the other people on the board would be willing to make that change to 60 days?
I'm not, I've got no objection to it all, I don't know that it's necessary, but I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. I'll make a comment also with regard to the parking at Claxton Field. I happened to park there a couple of days ago to go for a walk at the town forest, and the signs that say you're supposed to enter one of the driveways and exit the other are turned around, and you can't even see it. I, I think you might just take a quick look at that.
Yeah, and I think people ignore those signs anyway.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Ms. Owens, do you have, did I, did I ask you before people's position changes here on this board, but do you have any question or comment?
I have no comments or questions.
Okay, so usually in these situations, assuming that we're finished now, and after the discussion, there's nothing else anybody else wants to bring up. Yes, Mr. Heap?
I just wanted to add one comment. You, you were, nice to note that the decision as, as currently drafted seems to indicate that there will only be three cars parked in the parking area. And I, I think what I had intended to, to note in the request is that there would be parking in the, in the three striped spaces, but also in some additional cars along that area, to the extent that room is available, and it can be safely done. So I just, I just...
Well, I think we should, we should focus on that, because I thought it was a deliberate, I mean, our planning director, I assume, was involved in writing the decision, and I saw that your application said that there would be cars parked on the property beyond the three, but I saw the decision limited it, so I thought that was deliberate.
I did not note that in the draft, so I appreciate you pointing that out. And that was, that would be, I, I would respectfully request that we revise the draft decision before you vote it to allow for additional parking in that area, to the extent it can be safely done.
Well, what, well, that raises the issue of what would be safe, which we, you know, we're very careful about that when we approve plans, you know, to make sure that this churning radius and things like that. It does, it does seem that, you know, along the same strip where the three cars are, you could fit another four or five. I don't know about other locations on the plan. I don't know, how, how would we address this? Do you have any suggestion, Lee?
You're muted?
Muted. Sometimes we rely on our police, police chief to determine the safety of ingress and egress and that sort of thing. Could we, could there be a condition in the decision of consultation with the police about the number of cars that can safely be accommodated on the site? Without making it express number today, which I don't think we're prepared to do. Lee, you know you're muted?
Lee, you're muted.
I'm having trouble, it doesn't seem to unmute when I click it. Chris, would it make sense to have engineering just do, we'll do that, do this as a plan modification, and just have engineering give us a sketch on how they're going to lay out the parking on the site in addition to the three spaces, so we can see?
And, and you don't necessarily have to come back to the board, Lee, that could, the approval of that plan could be up to you and engineering?
Does that sound acceptable to you, Charis?
That's definitely doable for us.
Great, but that sounds perfect.
If, if they could lay out how many, how they're, how they're proposing to have people park on the site.
We can show dimensionally compliance, how many dimensionally compliant spaces we can fit in that area without actually stripping them on the ground. We can show them on the plan, and that, then, then, you know.
And that becomes, then that becomes a number on that property, and then you, the rest of them can go, can go across the street.
That sounds perfect.
All right, so we can vote to, well, typically with things like this, we have two, two votes. One is to determine that the request is in fact de minimis, or the change is de minimis, and we don't need to have a hearing, and then we vote the relief. And we have before us also a written decision, so... the relief, and we have before us also a written decision. So would need to vote that decision with the change that was just suggested.
There is one little complication I just want to mention. I have witnessed that some town vehicles are in fact out in the open, not undercover. I've seen it myself several times. So the areas you're talking about that could accommodate personal vehicles, some of them may be taken up with town equipment. And so, yes, Karras, please.
I would just say that those vehicles are likely not being utilized by an employee. So the vehicles that are out and not undercover are usually ones that are taken by an employee when they park their personal vehicle and then go into a town vehicle. So they wouldn't be sitting on the site at the same time because they'd either be in their town vehicle or they would be in their personal vehicle.
So that when they take a town vehicle from that site, then they're not, when they bring it back, are they putting it undercover?
Some are undercover, and I believe some are out.
All right, so.
That needs to be taken into account then with this consultation with engineering and approval, approval by planning director of the revised plan.
And it's in a violation of the permit as it exists right now because those those pieces of equipment are not supposed to be outdoors. So it's a two-step problem. They should be stored in accordance with the plan, and we don't want to compromise the number of vehicle, personal vehicles that could be accommodated. So we've got to resolve both of those things.
We can resolve to, if it's okay with the board, we can resolve to go through the, go through the conditions in the original, original decision and make sure that they're all being satisfied. Please.
Do we have enough guidance as far as the change to the decision that's needed to motion that just says with the with the change in the plans as discussed at this meeting, or do we need more wording crafting here?
No, I think it's, I think I understand it to be that you want to see the plan revised to show compliant additional parking spaces for employees, which establishes the onsite number, and that the remainder employees will park across the street. And that they, and that they are going to develop a plan that's going to demonstrate what that number is.
And that the the plot parking spaces need not be actually painted on the ground.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, all right, so do do we need a wording change to section two point zero?
There'll be a plan modification under that section. That's how how I was going to manage it.
Right, so you're you're going to draft language for that, Lee, or 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 do we want to vote language now, so something to the effect of the plan shall be modified to show the use of additional parking on the site as approved by the planning director? How does that sound?
That's fine.
And then section one point. I'm sorry, did we, did you have something further, Paul?
I was asking Chris if he was okay with that wording.
That sounds fine to me. Thank you.
Okay, and I don't think a change is needed to section one point four because that says, to the extent there is any parking, it refers to the fact that there are three spaces, and then says, to the extent that there is any parking demand beyond what can be accommodated in this area, DPW staff will temporarily, the plan modification will establish what can be accommodated.
Yes, and that should be my approval, but compliant with the bylaw terms. The parking needs to be compliant with the bylaw terms in terms of the the space sizes, et cetera.
All right, so do I have a motion with regard to whether this request is can be treated as a de minimis change?
So I I move that we vote to treat the proposed changes as requested as minor in nature, not requiring a public notice or a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so that is moved and seconded. I'll do the roll call. Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Hopper?
Hi.
And the chair is I. So we are going to go forward without the necessity for a public notice, a public hearing. So now we go to the relief that's requested, and and will, in this vote, will we simply refer to the decision, or do we?
Yeah, I'm going to move first that that we grant the requested modifications. Then I'll move on to the decision. So so first, I move that we grant the the requested modifications to major project site plan special permit number twenty thirteen dash oh two.
Second.
Okay, any, any comment on that? Call for a vote, Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Hopper?
Hi.
And the chair is I. So we are approving the relief sought. Now we move on to the decision.
And I move that we approve the decision as drafted with the modifications discussed this evening.
All right, any question or comment before I call for a vote? All right, the vote then, Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Hopper?
Hi.
And the chair is I. So that decision is approved with the modification discussed at tonight's meeting. Okay, so that, thank you, Mr. Heap, Ms. Lustick. We should be able to go forward with that. And we have, you know, we make arrangements to have these decisions be be on Marty Jacobs' back porch so we can quickly have things signed and and filed. So we should be able to take care of you pretty quickly on this.
Great. Thank you all very much.
All right. So now we simply go, I think, Lee Newman, would, do you want to report on the status of of the planning for the Highway Commercial One rezoning and planning study? Give us a project update.
Uh, sure. We had a a meeting this morning. Actually, it was a working meeting that was attended by Jean from the planning board and Paul, Mark Lucine from the design review board, Mary Ann Cooley, myself, and then Natasha and her staff, because she's developing the drawings relative to the urban design plan for the for the rezoning proposal, which involves both the as-of right existing existing condition situation where we're modeling a warehouse building and the proposed as-of-right situation where we're modeling commercial use and a mixed-use proposal, commercial and residential, and for the special permit. This was an opportunity for us to review the drawings as she's developed them so far, and for her to get some in some input as they're being developed to make sure that they're responsive to what the board's goals and objectives are. So we looked at those drawings this morning. We looked at some of the views that are being developed along the various streets, which show how the development looks and feels in terms of its scale, looking at it from Highland Avenue, for example, down toward one twenty-eight, coming down Ghoul Street toward the Highland Avenue intersection, and coming up from the highway, I'm looking at the muzzy site on the right. And I think it was a pretty productive meeting. And the plan is for her team to put together the drawings and carry them to the next step, and I'm going to have a working meeting with her on Wednesday. And I've looped out Adam in. I think it would be helpful since I think he is the person that's probably going to be making the presentation at town meeting on this. I think it's important to have him involved as the drawings are being developed, just to make sure that his voice is, is part of what's being developed, and we're sensitive to that. And so that's pretty much where we are. The planning board, we know we have a meeting planned for next week, Thursday, to kind of review these concept drawings. But we just wanted to create a process where as they're being developed, people can see them. And if there are additional things people want, or there there are, they have issues or concerns with the drawings, they can be addressed in an early stage before the drawings get too far down the pipeline. And and because, you know, we, it was going to be a working meeting, I kept it at two planning board members, I the chair and the vice chair of the board. But Paul volunteered, actually, since Adam's going to be doing the presentation at town meeting to relinquish his seat and turn it over to Adam.
So I think that go ahead, Adam, please.
I was just going to say, Paul, I have you to blame if I mess it up, but I was just going for humor there.
I I will, I I will gladly accept the blame. You go ahead and mess it up.
I, were, Lee, were there other suggested changes from the drawings that Natasha did by Mary Ann or anyone else?
Um, the one thing that Mary, the one additional, you know, we had, we had the work program, which I think I shared with everybody in the scope of work. The one thing that Mary Ann suggested that would be helpful that wasn't part of the original work program was to do some perspective drawings of what the building would look like as you were getting off of the highway, off of the interchange component of it. And so I'm having some, that wasn't part of the original contract, so I've got to work with Natasha on a cost to have that additional work time, which I'm doing right now. But so she wanted to see that actually, that shown to from a, from a perspective, in a, in a perspective drawing.
So that would, and that would be from the lowest elevation, is that right?
Yes, it's basically from a street elevation. I, yes, I'll send you this, the drawings as they've been developed so far. And so you can just kind of see a framework. The one thing that we did do this time around that we didn't do the last time was we decided to show this property in a larger regional context. The last time we showed it in a relatively small context with just a residential neighborhood across the street. And it's important, I think, to see it in a larger context, to see what's happening along Highland Avenue with some of the larger buildings with Wingate. It's important to see it in the context of Ghoul Street and what's actually happening as you move down Ghoul Street across the railroad tracks. And then actually also seeing it in the context of what's happening across the highway. It gives you a different perspective in terms of what the average building size is for commercial buildings in that generalized regional neighborhood, which I think is helpful. And she was able to actually import all this information into GIS, which is giving us a finer grained piece of information than we had previously. So I think you'll be pleased with what you'll see so far.
That's great.
And I I think one, one change that came out of this meeting after looking at some of the plans that were presented. And this was really coming from Natasha, is not just from, from the town employees and and board members that were in attendance, me and Mary Ann, and but the, and Paul, but the was, we had a certain height along Highland, the corner of Highland and Ghoul, going, like going east on on Highland towards one twenty-eight, for a certain distance, it was not going to exceed a certain height buildings. When Natasha actually did these plans and saw how, once you get beyond that that distance we had set, how any building that actually came out further and was higher had, was really had a a big impact, it looked too big. She's suggesting that we extend that distance for the lower height building farther east on Highland than we had it before.
By how much?
Have I expressed that correctly, Lee?
Yes, I see. Well, she, she's, we just showed that to you on the drawing. I think the question I asked her was it going, will will we still be able to hit the one point three five if we do that, which is the FAR? So she's looking at that. We didn't have a specific answer to that question at the meeting.
Well, how much further is she talking about?
She was talking about pretty much eliminating it along Highland and along the 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 exit ramp off of one twenty-eight, so that she was moving the line further into the, the, what's now the muzzy parking lot. So that.
Towards, towards the bowl, deeper into the bowl?
Yes, yes. So the building was really sitting more in the bowl, where the height would not be as, 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 as dominant and away from that, and away from that, more more the corner section of the of the property.
I I think that's great. I mean, that also takes into account some of the feedback that we've heard from from residents.
Right.
Yeah, I liked, I liked that change, proposed change.
I, I have a couple of questions and a couple of updates while we're talking about this. One question is, Lee, has the timing, you had sent around a draft timing for this, has that schedule changed at all since the meeting you had today, or based on where Natasha and everybody else may be?
We are all, we are all working toward that schedule. I mean, that if, 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 if we're going, if, if if a community meeting is going to happen in the the first week of February, that is the schedule that we have to have.
So on the point of the community meeting, and I presume that that Mary Ann was aware of the possibility or likelihood of the planning meeting, is that right? Was that discussed today?
We didn't discuss any, we did not discuss the schedule at all today, or the community meeting at all. It was just really a meeting around review of the work that Natasha had done so far.
Okay. So separately, the last time we discussed this, we wanted to see whether the Heights Association that we, I think we resolved that the planning board meeting, the planning board would host the meeting as a community meeting, and we would see if the Heights Association would be able to participate and help, and help market the the event. And so I've had an opportunity to speak with most of the members of the board. I think I haven't heard back from one, but it's been consistent among the board members that I've heard back from that they all would be, they all agreed to, you know, utilize the Heights Association's platform to help promote the meeting. There was a question of cost if, if one of the social media platforms charges, whether or not the town might reimburse the association for the cost of the communication, but we can chat about that offline. I don't know what the ordinary protocol is, and I'm not, you know, too fussed.
We'll have to chat, chat about that offline.
That's fine. But I did want to let you know that, that the association, you know, would agree to promote, help promote the event in addition to the other promotional activities, you know, that the town will undergo.
That's very good because I know our goal was to reach out to the Needham Heights neighborhood, and the association would be particularly good with, at that.
So could we talk maybe a little bit about what the board sees as the goals for the workshop? Is the goal for the workshop to do a presentation of of the the urban design plan and the traffic study and get input from residents on their agreement with that development proposal or or concept plan?
Well, I think that the main primary message of the community meeting is, we heard you. You know, we, we had these meetings last year. I think the the newspaper misreported the the process that occurred previously, but and and we have responded to the concerns that were raised, and we want to show you the changes we've made in the proposed zoning, and here they are. I know we could wait and do that at at the formal public hearing, but I think as been, as has been said, but then you've got those changes all written up in what seems very final to the people who come to the meeting. And so the community meeting gives that our earlier opportunity. I also think, I mean, we're talking about presenting data and traffic data and and plans and sketches to show what residential use would be like on this site. And I think in, you know, in coming up with the actual zoning, we're going to have to get some feedback on whether the town some feedback on whether the town wants residential or wants this to be strictly commercial.
I would. One thing that worries me about this, you certainly raise a really critical question, Jean, is that I'm not sure that we, I don't know that we necessarily need to to resolve it. In other words, it may be perfectly fine to set out the conditions in which residential would be permissible and the other uses. Do you know what I mean? My fear is if we limit it, if we propose, if the zoning ends up being too limited, then we may, we could potentially miss a market if it turns out, for instance, that residential is really the you know, if a residential developer ends up being a developer that that submits an application, you know, before us. But it could also be that, you know, if that commercial, as we're laying out between office and some kind of lab space or R and D space, a developer for that type of a program would be, would it could emerge. I wouldn't want to limit the market. I'd want to let the market kind of decide that.
I think there was one way discussed at the meeting today that about a limit, and it's similar to what was proposed on the other side of the highway when we allowed residential, which we haven't had a project yet. And that is to have a cap on the number of units. So the cap on the number of units would be lower than what one could get if you devoted the entire site to residential. And that goes in the direction of always looking for a mixed use kind of development. And not necessarily in the same building, but certainly on the same property as a whole. So I guess what I'm hearing you say, Adam, is we should just go forward saying our concept is mixed use. That could be residential and so forth. And present it without saying we're seeking response on whether we should have residential or not. We go in proposing all three kinds of, well, four really, you know, research and development, office, retail restaurant and residential.
I, that's right. I would, I mean, I would say that to the community that based on, as you said, you know, based on the feedback we've received, which was to reduce the density and to reconfigure the placement of a building through the setbacks so that there's a greater mass in the bowl and less by proximity to the residential neighborhoods. I think we want to address that and we also you know, want to address and identify what those, what the uses are. And that we propose the uses to be left to the market under these restrictions or conditions for mixed use, commercial and or residential. Personally, I'm not sure that a residential development necessarily makes sense there because it's not so, although it's the proximity to the highway is great and also to get into Newton and up to into Wellesley is pretty good too, but there's no public transportation there right now. So it may, it may not turn out that that emerges as the right model, but perhaps a mixed use developer, you know, has the right model. And maybe if this thing ends up getting greenlit five years from now or 10 years from now, maybe there'll be a new, a new mode of transportation that's getting close to that site. Or there might be a plan approved that maybe at that, you know what I mean?
There is a bus line that's relatively close that, you know, maybe could be rethought in terms of its, in terms of its path.
Right. I mean, there's been, you know, it's across the street from from Needham Crossing. And transportation was a factor in the Needham Crossing development for TripAdvisor and others to be able to move employees and residents to connect them to other parts of, to other modes of transportation. So you know, we'll address and share the similar questions at that site and time, especially if it moves in a residential direction. But I just think that my opinion, I would propose that the market decide ultimately what's the best, you know, what's the best use.
Well, that raises a question that I, that we discussed this morning about whether we have a cap on the number of units. What we, what we talked about this morning was, was kind of assumed that we were going to have the same 240 unit cap that we have on mixed use 128. And we discussed the possibility that with that limited cap, a totally residential property, a totally residential development would probably not, not be built. Because it was, it was, it was too small to support that. That a 240 unit mix would make sense with, with a mixed use situation. So we have to decide as a board whether we're going to have a cap on the number of units or whether we're not, so that's a possibility.
Lee, can you remind me what, how many units the Kendrick is? Is that 388?
I think it's 380. I have to look up. I think it's 380.
So that's a third less than the Kendrick, which is a significant difference. Paul, just for clarity, are you thinking that 240 units with some ancillary light retail on the first floor might be a magic mix?
Yes, that's what, that's basically what Natasha showed. We went with this 240 number because that's the number that got developed for mixed use 128 as the maximum number of units overall in that district. And the fiscal impact analysis that was done on that supported it in a way so that the development wasn't going to create a negative cash flow for the town.
At that time.
At that time, that number of units with the unit mix that they were looking at was doable without creating a negative cash flow situation. And so that's why that number was arrived at.
That's a good point. If we're looking at this from a from a revenue generation point of view, I think we need to be.
Have a limit.
Yeah, we, we need to be encouraging commercial. Because that's where the tax base without needing so much in the way of services.
Right.
Yep.
I mean, there definitely is that benefit. Although if it was, you know, age restricted, the use is less. Do you know what I mean?
That's true. And we are going to have, we are going to have a fiscal impact study done. So if we decide to go with the 240 units or that's part of the proposal, we will have the numbers on the cash flow of that development under that mixed use scenario with commercial and residential versus straight commercial. And you'll see what the revenue loss is by adding that residential component.
I agree with Adam that you want to let the market, to the extent possible, you want to let the market decide what's built. But my question is sort of along the lines of what we talked about last time is what I'm hearing is that it's the lab space that's in great demand, not office space.
Yeah, that's right.
And so should we be modeling a project that is essentially, you know, somewhere close to 100% lab space?
Well, I think we are modeling that. When we model a combination, we're modeling a combination of office at 50, at half, lab at half and 15% retail. And essentially, in the building footprint or the building block that you're building, the office space and the lab space is interchangeable. So the massing that you're seeing, the building size is pretty much interchangeable, whether it's lab or it's corporate office.
Is that pretty well accepted that the lab space and office space are sort of interchangeable when we're looking at the modeling?
I asked that question of Natasha this morning and she told me yes.
That is, I don't totally understand what's meant by that. Are you meaning like the size and shape and design of the building would generally be similar? Or does that mean?
Yes, that's what she told me, that the building blocks that she was developing would be similar. There was a question though, when we started to break this up into smaller buildings, whether or not a lab user, if it was one singular lab user, would go along with multiple buildings or would be looking for a single building.
May I comment on something that Natasha said this morning on that? I would not want to model a totally lab space scenario based on what Natasha said, because one of the things that she mentioned was that she is working on projects for totally lab space, totally R and D space and her her clients on those projects are not concerned about design. They just as soon have, have buildings that are boxes that have no kind of, you know, subtle, subtle design aesthetics. They're not concerned with, with aesthetics. They're concerned with having a floor plan that works for them and just, you know, put up a building. And if, you know, if we give Natasha the direction, show us what it looks like for 100% lab space and she shows up with boxes, whether it's, you know, one big box or two or three small boxes, town meeting's not going to like it. You need to show something that has some character.
There are a few other notes about lab space as well. And it's true, Marty, to your point, lab space among among various real estate sectors, the lab space has been in high demand. And that, that's accelerated substantially as a result of the work being done. And there are a number of Massachusetts companies that have been involved in various parts of the COVID vaccine and some of the treatments. And yet, it's very, very rare for a large lab to suddenly take, you know, move in and be the sole lab kind of tenant or landowner, whatever emerges in that one site in isolation. They tend to cluster. They cluster together for a multitude of reasons. One, in part to share resource, but also, and kind of to both of your points, what ends up happening with lab space is they need the pharmaceutical and biotech industry is extraordinarily time sensitive. A pharmaceutical company will hire 100 salespeople to develop the sales pipeline. And before the product has actually been approved by the FDA. So that way, if it's approved, they can go, you know, they can go right to market with their distribution. And we have on the CEA, a number of commercial folks that deal directly in the lab space. And and they prefer, we, there is no comment about the creative aesthetic and, you know, this is a gateway to town. So to your point, you know, Paul, we've got to be sensitive that whatever the design creative looks like, it's going to, you know, address the fact that we're, you know, we're very close to that residential neighborhood. And it's got to have a sense of character. But the lab space carries, lab tenants, the pharmaceutical companies in particular, are very concerned about the ability that the facility has the right electrical power, the right sewage disposal or biodisposal, the right water systems in place, the right air conditioning. They require, they have a very high requirement if they're manufacturing, you know, whatever they could be manufacturing. And it's an extraordinarily expensive endeavor. I think more so to suit out a pharmaceutical company with a lab than it necessarily is for a developer to put up, you know, a fairly simple, straightforward, modern looking office space. Yet, if a developer finds a model that can work, they typically want to work with you know, lab tenants or biotech tenants in advance as much as possible to be able to support the work that they would embark to make the application. I would, I would propose that our zoning be as flexible as possible to allow whatever the market emerges, if it's a mixed use residential and light retail or if it's mixed use between R and D and office. If a lab space, I mean, I would love to see a lab there and connect the lab more closely to some of the firms that we have in Needham Crossing. But I'm not sure that, I just, I just don't know whether the market would support that.
But Adam, what you're saying is let the market force what will emerge for whatever's proposed. But that's why we're showing it's 50% this and 50% that and a little bit of this and a little bit of that. And just to give an idea of what it will look like.
Right.
We can't predict, of course, what will actually look like.
Yes.
But we, you know, unless it was our judgment that really that what we want for this site is lab development and we're just going to show that and we're going to zone for that. But that's not what you're saying.
No.
We're only in the right direction, aren't we?
I think what we want to do in terms of our use table is to allow research and development, allow commercial, allow office, allow residential, possibly with a cap on the number of units for residential. We have to talk about that. But, you know, just allow them and allow mixed use for all of those potential uses.
Yes.
And then the market, market will decide. In terms of showing to town meeting what the buildings might look like, we wanted to show character. We want Natasha to show models of buildings that have some design and character instead of boxes. That's all.
Yep. So that's what we've asked her to do and we expect that's what she's going to do. And we'll have something that we can proudly present as being responsive to what we were told that people want for this site. And that's our goal.
And so you'll see, so I'm working with Natasha this week and Adam will be participating on Wednesday in our working meeting. So my goal is to get the information out to you on Friday or Saturday of this week for our meeting Thursday where you can look at what she's actually developed and she'll be available to walk everybody through. And that will be kind of the framework, I think, for the workshop that we're going to be holding the first of February and the zoning. And then we'll be able to modify what she gives us and we actually see at the meeting next week.
All right. So I didn't put it on my calendar. We're talking about having a meeting on Thursday, the 14th.
That's correct.
At what time?
At 7:15.
In the evening.
In the evening.
Okay. Let me get it on my calendar now.
And then the workshop, I think, was February, I want to say, 3rd. I think it was Wednesday. Yeah, February 3rd was the workshop.
At what time? 7?
Yeah, 7. We'll miss like 7. And so.
What you've referred to as the community meeting, no, that's.
Community meeting, I'm sorry. The community meeting would be February the 3rd. So then after we meet on the 14th, I mean, I'll be working with the board and Adam preparing, you know, some kind of invitation and coming up with the strategy to invite people to the community meeting on the 3rd, which I would imagine would involve, you know, an email invite to town meeting members, some kind of mailing that goes out to the neighborhoods immediately around the property. And then Adam linking with whatever you and the Heights can help us with to augment that.
And I'm sure the legal will mean both as well. And I'm sure the League of Amendmenters will put it on the book on the.
Yeah, that's, that's another good source. Yes, Jean, good, I, good, good reminder. Thank you.
Is, is the fourteenth the meeting on February fourteenth? That's a board meeting?
Yes.
January fourteenth.
Yeah, January fourteenth.
Excuse me, January fourteen, that's a, that will be a posted planning board meeting, right?
Right, and this is the only thing that's gonna be on that agenda.
At seven fifteen, you said?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're all set with that, uh, agenda item. Um, and the next thing is Board of Appeals. Um, there were two things on the Board of Appeals agenda. Um, one is a little bit unusual because it's talking variance. Um, but it's a situation where a variance had previously been issued and they're looking essentially for an amendment to the variance so that they didn't perhaps put it that way. So that's for sixty cent a lab. And the other is, uh, for an accessory dwelling unit at sixteen Edwadel Road. So I'm not suggesting we make any comment. Uh, does any, uh, member of the planning board think we should make, uh, comments on either of those?
No, none for me.
Okay, everybody all set?
I move, we have no comment on either of those second questions.
So it's removed and seconded that we have no comment on, um, on, on the two, uh, agenda items on the, on the Board of Appeals. Um, is, does anybody want to speak to that before I take a vote? No? Okay, then, um, call for a vote, Mr. Block.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
And Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Chair is eye, so we're all set with that. Um, the minutes, um, I, I did have the opportunity to review the minutes. And I think, uh, the red line that I prepared was included in a, a later, uh, email that went out. The October twentieth, uh, I just, you know, it's just changes for clarity or from typos or grammatical things. Um, so if any, unless somebody else has a comment to make on, um, the meeting of the, on the minutes of October twentieth. Is there a motion to, uh, Chris, does anyone have any other, any comment on these minutes? Or see any for any further change?
Uh, just have a question for Lee. Bottom of page two, uh, the gate on Dedham Ave from the Pollard School. Can you just give us any update, if there is any, on where things stand?
I don't have an update, Marty, but I will follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, if there is no further comment on these minutes, is there a motion to accept the minutes of October twenty, twenty twenty?
We, we accept the minutes of October twenty, twenty twenty with the changes suggested by Jean.
Second.
So, uh, we have vote on that, um, Mr. Block.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Albert.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Chair is eye, so those minutes are accepted. On the, um, minutes of, um, November eighteenth, um, I just have one question at the top of page two. Um, and this was on the subject of, um, let's see. Oh, well, of course, this is all about, uh, highway commercial one. Again, uh, it was a special meeting focused on highway commercial one. Um, but at the top of the second page, uh, it's talk, it was talked about, um, Ms. Brown, who was, um, presenting a traffic study, said she looked at where people were coming from. Jer- comma, journeys to work or place of residency and building density model within a thirty minute driving radius of the site. Okay. Um, trip distribution came out similar with each. I don't know what each is.
It was a category that she described in, in the sentence below, above. There were two different, there were different databases that she was utilizing to generate, to be able to generate the trips. And so the, it was, she's referring back to the three methodologies in the previous sentence.
Just like, uh, similar with each of these categories?
Yes.
That makes sense. Okay. So, um, that would be the one further change in addition to those that I already made, which weren't really naturally of substance. So with that one additional change and the changes that are shown on the red line that was distributed, do I have a motion for the acceptance of the November eighteen, twenty twenty minutes?
And will we accept the mi- minutes of November eighteen, twenty twenty with the changes suggested by Jean McKnight?
Okay.
All right, and that includes the change we just discussed, just by implication.
Your changes, Jean.
And, uh, all right, so we're gonna motion a second and Adam Block, uh, a vote now.
Hi.
Um, Mr. Jacobs.
Yes, hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
And Mr. Owens.
Hi.
And chair is eye, so we have accepted the minutes of November eighteen. So correspondence and report from Planning Director and Board members. I have something, but I'll look, I'll turn it over to Lee and let her decide what, what we want to present.
Um, well, I just, the only, the only update that I wanted to cover was really a highway commercial one, which is what we've already gone through. So, um, I have nothing else to add beyond that.
Um, so I don't know if it's helpful to put up the spreadsheet that I prepared.
Um, Jean, this is Alex. I'm gonna ask you to restart before you do a presentation. Um, you're getting a little row body and maybe if it would be helpful for Clay to start the screenshot while you're doing that, were, were you gonna ask him to do that?
Okay, I'll, I'll zoom off.
Uh, I'm in charge, but I've got nothing to say.
I move, we adjourn then.
He wants to go over her ta- over the table.
Be something a little additional to look at anyway.
Jean will have nothing to come back to.
Yeah, but let's just all log off.
Don't think we had technical troubles and we're automatically continued.
Uh, Jean's back. I turn the gavel back over to Jean McKnight.
Um, I don't, I, you know, I'm trying to remember what originally inspired me to, uh, do this spreadsheet.
You have too much time on your hands, Jean.
I guess so. Um, I was, uh, I think there's really a couple of things. I was meeting, you know, I've been meeting with a working group of the organization that calls itself Equal Justice Needham. And our working group is focused on housing. And I tend to see myself as a bit of a resource person for this group. Um, you know, to explain, for example, how forty B works, uh, to explain our zoning. Um, and, um, so, and then, of course, we have the, um, application for an eight unit, um, condiment, whereas we were told would, would be condominium, um, on Honeywell, a four hundred Honeywell. And so I was looking, I originally assumed, well, of course, we'll have an affordable housing requirement and I suppose it's one unit. No, we don't. And so I, um, I researched all of our zones and presented them in this chart. Uh, I mean, I didn't research things like, um, you know, wetland overlay zones and things like that, but just the zones that go substantively to the kind of, um, uses that Kim can go on, on property. And we do, we do have, I guess, what's called incentive zoning, uh, in, in, in some districts where we do require a certain percentage of units to be affordable if, um, multifamily housing is, is to be developed. Um, for example, um, a highway, no, wait a minute. A mixed use one, wait a minute, mixed use one twenty, we have none. Um, oh, the mixed use overlay district. And I'll say in general, um, many of our overlay districts where we allow multifamily housing, we have the requirement for a certain number of units. For example, what we just approved an overlay for Avery Square and for the, um, um, the independent living senior housing that would go there. And in that case, we provide, if there are more than ten units, then we require twelve and a half percent of the units and you round up to be affordable. Um, in, um, and, and the elder service, uh, district that's right across the street from Ozzy property we're talking about here. We have this, uh, very similar, we have, if you have ten units, you have to have one affordable housing unit for those ten. If it's eleven plus, then you use a ten percent. So it kind of varies. Um, then, uh, we've got all of these overlays around our, uh, center, Needham Center. We've got, um, both A and B overlays for Needham Center. We've got Lower Chestnut Street overlay, Garden Street overlay. And what we do allow, and, and in all these cases, it's, we only allow mixed use in the overlay. You have to have, um, you know, like the, we have only had the one project, uh, you know, in all these years, the, the one on Dedham Avenue across the street from the Unitarian Church. Uh, but our standard is if you have at least six units, then you have to have one affordable unit. If you go over ten, if you know, eleven plus units, it's ten percent. So we've got a little bit different in each of the zones, um, but we, but it's primarily on the overlay zones. So what I, what I highlighted in yellow, um, are the zones where we do allow, um, multifamily housing by special permit. For example, in the Avery Square Business District, we allow multifamily by special permit. You know, the height is limited, it's thirty five percent height, two and a half stories. Um, um, but we have no affordable requirement. Um, I think there are two examples that have come in during my tenure on the board. And I think in both cases, there are only, um, two units. Um, one is across the street from the sub shop, um, where there's a framing on the first floor, there's a framing shop and a cleaners. Above that are residential units, um, it's either two or three, um, and the access to those units is from the rear. And also on the corner of Honeywell and Highland, uh, Mike Tadoli put in a building that has medical office on the first floor. And there appear to be two residential units on the second floor. So, um, we haven't had any big, any built, buildings that would be big enough to trigger an affordable requirement. But you never know what could come along. Why don't we just put something in on the Avery Square Business? That, uh, if somebody comes along with a multifamily that has, uh, six units or, you know, whatever we want to use as a standard, it would be required there. And, um, the same thing in the center business. You know, we have, uh, we recently approved the project again that Tadoli brought forth on Oak Street. And that is not developed under the overlay, that's developed under the underlying zoning, uh, for, um, Chestnuts, I guess this Chestnut Street, um, business area. Um, and so he has a few, uh, housing units, uh, on the upper floor of his building. Um, I forget how many, maybe four. Um, but, um, there's no affordability requirement, um, at all. Um, so why not have, you know, some affordability requirement on, if we're going to allow multifamily at all in these underlying zoning, zones or mixed use, which is what we do allow. Um, why not have an affordability requirement? And then of course, um, Hillside, uh, Avenue is the same thing. Uh, so that's what I present, uh, it, it's a simple fix. We might want to take a look at making our requirement consistent everywhere in town instead of having, well, here it's six units and there it's ten. But we particularly would like to introduce it to those zones where we don't have it. And it's something we could do this spring if we wanted to. So what do you, what do you think?
Lee, why, why don't you include the apartment zones where it says affordability requirement none? In your.
I think it was more a time of when the zoning for those districts was created. So, um, when, um, I think when we began to do the overlay districts was when we, we began to include, because they were higher density.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking why they're not highlighted in yellow as areas where we want to make the change?
Well, let me respond to that since I created this spreadsheet. Um, those, those are fully developed.
If I said Lee, I meant to say Jean.
Yeah, those, those are fully developed. Um, I forget which is which, but one of them is Rosemary Ridge where I live. Um, and then the Tadoli, uh, I mean, excuse me, uh, not Tadoli, but the development next that would cross from the lake, Lakeview Apartments, I think they're called. And then the other one is, um, hi- um, on Highland Avenue. I lived there too, uh, for one year, um, across from the Avery School. What's that called? Anyway, you're fully developed. What's that?
You talking about the Highlands? It says developments.
No, not the Highlands, um, the, um, oh gosh.
Okay.
The brain doesn't work. I'll have to call Steve and say, Steve, what's the name of that place we lived for a year? But that, the, the short answer is these are fully developed already with apartment buildings. Uh, it seems quite unlikely those apartment buildings would be torn down and rebuilt in a way we'd want to require it. That's all.
But it can't hurt, you know, if we're gonna have a townwide requirement, it seems to me that it can't hurt to put it in there and existing buildings, existing buildings are grandfathered.
Yeah, that's right.
Even though, even though I'm sorry, we're not supposed to use that word, but I don't know how else to shorthand. What grandfathering is.
Right, it's not retro, it's not retrospective that now Rosemary Ridge has to, has to somehow provide a certain number of affordable units. No, of course, I'm not under, you know, a state of law, a state law. So, uh, yeah, we could certainly do that and try to go in the direction of having a, um, a townwide, provision everywhere where multifamily is allowed, if you have a certain number of units, a certain percentage has to be affordable.
Well, there's also, I think, a conversation to be had about whether or not you want to have some, maybe not units created, but other towns are requiring in their residential developments. Um, either a unit gets created or a cash contribution is made as a percentage of the number of single family houses that are created into, 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 into the housing trusts so that that can be directed toward the provision of affordable housing.
That's right, you're talking about residential subdivisions.
Yeah, so it's, you know, other, other communities are doing this beyond just their commercial districts where there's apartments. They're, they're doing it within their residential developments to either requiring units be built or, or monies be dedicated to, uh, an affordable housing trust for housing production elsewhere.
As.
You know, I'll go ahead, Adam.
Has, uh, the select board had an initiative to, uh, related to affordable housing as well and how to address, uh, I guess what would amount to friendly forty Bs. I don't know if this is a, a bit of an outgrowth from that, or is there a way to tie this into that effort? Are there certain priorities?
Well, I saw this as being really separate from the friendly forty Bs. Um, we're still very much working on those guidelines. I know I asked the question, well, if, if you're talking about zones where apartments are already allowed, multifamilies are already allowed, such as all the overlay districts in our center business, um, why were those areas especially mentioned as good for friendly forty Bs? Are they talking about? Um, oh, you know, having them more dense than allowed undercover zoning? Is that the direction? I think it's still a little confused.
When you guys were, uh, contemplating, um, uh, redevelopings farther south on, uh, on Chestnut Street. did you guys approach the question of affordable units at that time?
Oh, yes. For that side, they were going to be a certain percentage of units affordable.
They were going to be 12 and a half percent.
Yeah. So if you want me to work up along the lines we were talking about of some, something that would be an amendment to our zoning by law, but what would apply in all our districts? So we don't have it this in this district, this in this district.
That's the way to do it.
Yeah, and, and since we just approved the elder services, I don't know, you know, I don't know whether we want to tinker with that. They haven't come, they haven't come forward with a special permit application yet, have they, Lee?
No.
Yeah.
I think they're, 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 they're meeting with people. They've met with engineering, they've met with fire, with the fire chief. So they're moving forward.
But I'd be glad to work on that and can discuss it at a subsequent meeting and see if it makes sense. If it's simple enough, clear enough to present, doesn't make a big, I mean, I know our focus has to be highway commercial this, this annual meeting. But if this would be just something that might be perceived as helpful by the town in general, by proponents of affordable housing and clean up our bylaw with all these different provisions in different places, you know, maybe it'd be a good thing.
I, I think it's a great idea, Jean.
Okay. I'll keep working on it then with Lee too.
My political question is, should, should we, should we be approaching the select board at this time and letting them know that we're considering this?
I think so, actually, and I'm recalling a conversation, I got a call from Dan Matthews. Gee, by now it's a month or two ago. And he wanted to know if something was being brought forward for affordable housing in any location. And I said, no, I, nothing I heard of. And I don't know why he was asking, I think, you know, there's a, the selectmen are really responding to this. You know, Needham needs to be more diverse. I listened to their December 8th meeting. I watched their December 8th meeting. I was very surprised at the response of the selectmen in a more progressive direction than I had expected.
You know, you know, the town did a housing plan years ago, which had a lot, and which had a lot of really good recommendations in it, some of which have been implemented. It might make sense for the town to, you know, re-envision that housing plan that we did in light of the developments that have happened recently. And this would be one recommendation that might come out of it, which is a strat, which would be a strategy for inclusionary zoning, that are the contexts across the commercial districts and the residential districts.
Yeah, I kind of see the subdivision idea as a little bit of a different idea that might not be accepted right away, but other towns are doing it for sure. I guess we so rarely yet a subdivision of any size, that's the thing.
Oh, we, we, we have in my part of town.
Jean, the other thing is you're looking at these districts where, where, where the examples that you've given of the developments that we have, that have happened have been really relatively small scale. So I don't know, I don't know economically if you can demand a unit be dedicated, but maybe there's a monetary contribution that could be made.
You mean, even if you have a small scale, like, you know, only two or three units, you're going to make a monetary.
If there's some contribution that goes into, into the fund, that.
Yeah, we could see what other towns are doing in that regard. Oh, by the way, I see, I see in my own spreadsheet on the apartments that I listed them. So I tried to use my memory, failed me, but the, but it's Webster Green. That's the other apartment.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and A2 is the Highlands, yep. So those, it's right there on the spreadsheet. But okay, Lee, are you saying when you talk about the housing plan that we should focus on that initially and maybe not bring anything before this coming annual town meeting?
And it was, it might make sense to do this in the context of an overall updated housing plan. I, you know, because this is a component of it, really. This is a recommendation that would come out of that housing plan.
Okay. All right, let's talk about that then. But I'm, I'm glad to work on it in any event and.
Thanks, Jean.
Yeah, okay. Very good then. I think that unless there's something else you want to present, Lee, I think that's all we have on our, or another board member wants to present.
That's all I have for, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else?
Ron, I'm sure.
Yes, Adam?
I just generally, I had a question about Grove Street. That was Grove Street. They were, I think it was 390 Grove, I can't remember. It kept coming, it comes back and goes and back and goes.
It's continued until the 19th.
January 19th.
And I've had, I've had a meeting after the last hearing, the engineering department and I sat down with the developers engineer and went, went through a list of comments that we had gotten from the petitioner. And they're going to, they were going to be addressing those concerns and getting us some revised drawings back to address them for engineering to review. So that at your next meeting, you'll have a revised set of drawings and you'll have the applicant's response to the questions that were raised by the abotters. And you'll have an engineering response to that.
And was that, I vaguely recall there was some question about there's a limit to how many, I, I might be wrong on this, forgive me. If there was a limit to how many times they could come back or at some point they had to like to make a whole new application. But I just was curious what that process was and it wasn't.
I think the process, well, we, we kept continuing this, we, we keep continuing this hearing, which can be a dangerous thing because you have to keep track of the dates. It's an accident waiting to happen. Because if you don't act within the statutory timeline, you can have an approval by default. So once you're out past the statutory timeline on a subdivision, then you have to continually be extending it and getting the applicant to agree and filing it with the town clerk. And if for some reason you mess up on any of that, they could claim that it's approved by default.
Even though, even though they're the ones that are effectively initiating the continuations?
Yes. If we, if we don't, if we don't, if we don't keep our, if we don't keep our, our eyes on it and follow the dates and make sure that they have requested it, we have voted to accept it, we have noticed it with the town clerk. We missed one of that, one of those, and they could, they could file and say it was an approval by default. So the longer it goes on, this kind of elongated process, the easier it is to have those kinds of errors. And also the harder it is just to keep track of what's going on.
Was, was, of course, was there some discussion about them, if they didn't, before the end of the year, if they didn't do X, they would have to reapply?
Yes, we talked to them, we, I gave, we gave them some timelines that they had to meet in terms of when plans needed to be submitted or we would, or we would, we would be looking at them withdrawing the application and refiling. But George then came in with the filing, which is what you heard at the last meeting.
Oh, I, okay, so I think that's what that was, that I think gives me a little more clarity. But thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, well, we have a motion to adjourn and a second and call for the vote on adjournment. Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
And the chair is I, and we are adjourned.
Well, before we do that, do we have to do something with regard to signature page or something?
Yes, so the de minimis change, let me just think, is that the only signature sheet? Because I think we already did children's, but I still need to notarize your signature, Marty. So the de minimis change signature sheet, maybe Lee and I can make sure you have the final version of that tomorrow, Marty, and then ask you if you're willing to print those out since I won't be in Needham. And then we can just let everybody know when they're there. And Marty, if you would refrain, I can arrange to notarize your signature at the same time as the other one.
Okay.
That would be great. And I can just kind of update everybody via email once that's out there and ready to go.
Yeah, and we have that, we have that my law, but there really is not an emergency on that. That was a sheet that had to be resigned and pure Zach subdivision.
Was that, was that new? Was that, I remember signing something.
Yeah, I don't know if the board knows about that, Lee.
Oh.
Oh, um, there was a mistake on one of the drawings that got signed. It had some references on it that weren't supposed to be there. So I made them reprint it and it needs to be resigned, but it wasn't, it wasn't a sheet that had to go on record. So it wasn't slowing them down, but I had them reprint it and so it has to be resigned.
Mostly just so our records are clean and accurate.
Are accurate.
To single page from that.
It was a single page. It had some plan references that they were supposed to delete, that they didn't delete. And when we were signing it and checking it, finally we caught it and so I had them reprint it.
So that unfortunately is at the engineering division's office and I have to bring that to Marty's and I'm not going to be in the office until either the end of this week or next week. So it, but as we said, it's not urgent, we'll just kind of get it with the next, whatever the next round is.
What do you want to do about the minutes that I have to sign?
We haven't been signing them since COVID and I think, I don't know. I just started echoing back to myself, it's awful. If we need them signed, I would be happy, we haven't signed any since then. So we've got Jean's signature awaiting, yours. I guess I leave it to Lee whether it has to be done or.
Well, we could just print out a batch and leave them there at one point.
Well, I was going to ask whether you could PDF them to me. I signed them in blue ink and then PDF them back because I have the ability to PD, to, to have it go in, in color PDF. Does that work for you?
I think that's fine.
You mean to send you the, the final minutes of, of everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Just the signature pages.
Well, that.
Or send me the minutes.
Okay.
Send me the minutes I, I signed them and I PDF them back to you, or I drop them in the mail to you.
Sure.
Yeah, that, that, we at least get it done, why not?
Okay, and I'll do that for Jean too, from when, before she was chair.
And so just so you all know, and so for Honeywell, I've, I've asked George to send the revised drawings out to everybody. So you should be, you should be receiving them. And we've asked him to put together a cover memo which describes the changes he's made because he didn't bubble any of the plans.
I'm wondering if he's going to address the issue, you know, but doing a little moving of the building, address the issue of shadows. I mean, we're, we're adjourned now, so I don't want to talk about substance. But I do want to mention that in the packets that went out were some photographs that I took of the adjacent building and the shadow situation. So you might want to take a look at those.
All right, I think we're done, huh?
I think we're done.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Oh, Happy New Year.
And we're all going to get the shot and be back in the office soon.
I don't know how soon.
Gee, the 19th is our next meeting. We still won't know for sure if we have a new president.
True, true.
We have a new, we have a new president.
I am going to predict that we will not know even by the 19th.
Everything's fresh.
The Senate.
Oh, really? I, I thought, I thought maybe I could pop the champagne on tomorrow night, you don't think so?
I think, you know, it's, they're showing the races to be so close that I think whoever loses is going to ask for a recount and have challenges and.
You're probably right.
Me.
I'm going to sign off, which is actually going to end the meeting.
Good. Thank you.
Night.
Night.
Good night, everyone.